7:32, on call this November 3 meeting in Yardley Borough Council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this evening with our roll call.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Brier.
Here.
Mr. Burton. Mr. Feiner.
Good.
Mr. Ross. Ms. Skeel Morris.
Here.
And Mr. King.
Here. All right, thank you. With five members present, we do have a call. First up, we will begin with community announcements. It's an opportunity for any member of council or mayor to share that in for the public good.
Canalene happening right now. The experience currently still looking for a few volunteers to help with traffic coordination. So if any council members, any members of the public are interested, the sign up is all over Facebook, or I can provide it to you if you email me.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
The coat drag is going to be starting for the police department and the auxiliary. It starts tomorrow, right Chief?
Tomorrow morning, yeah.
Gently used or new coats for adults. We're working with Bucks County homeless, right?
Yes.
And we'll be donating all the coats to them and they'll be given amount for any of the COVID related events that happen throughout Bucks County. So anybody who has any coats, we have four locations, Starbucks, Borough Hall, Johnson Chiropractic, and the American Legion will be having boxes. So please drop off your coats. They're needed very much.
Thank you. Any other announcements from council? Make the same offer for the public? Ms. Taylor?
Just to let you and the community know, the Yardley Historical Association will be having three open houses this year. It may go for last year when we had none. The first three Saturdays in December, and there will be a bigger and better than ever train display, including not only trains but trawlers, two means of transportation comfort. So we invite everyone to come. We have a real Christmas tree coming with peanut butter wings. And the theme this year is Public Avenue Public Day.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Hearing none, we'll close that portion. But before we go into public comment, I do just want to make some acknowledgements. In fact, we had an election here in Yardley Borough and indeed everywhere across the Commonwealth yesterday. But to extend, congratulations to those candidates who won election or won reelection. We all look forward to working together in the next term. And I also want to extend thanks to the candidates who put themselves out there. It's such a difficult thing to do, to run for office. You are asked all sorts of questions. You're engaged in the dialogue about our community. It's not necessarily easy to have, and you are open to criticism. I genuinely believe that everybody here at Yardley did this from a place of wanting to better our community. And now that the election is done, the voters have spoken, it's time to settle in, continue to work together, and put the disagreements of the campaign behind us as we move forward. So thank you to all. Congratulations to those who were victorious last night. With that, we'll move into public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you would be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Members of the public are asked to please come to the front, to the microphone, so those viewers at home can hear you, state your name and address for the record, and keep comments to approximately three minutes in length. Do you have any public comments this evening?
Dawn Fromm under 18 West College Avenue. I just had at first some questions about the agenda. There is something on here, executive session personnel. I was just wondering what the nature of that is.
Sure. We are informing council, chief's contract is up, so it's just a review of the renewal.
Okay, just for that contract, not for any others.
It's just that.
And I knew I was in that meeting, but what does the COOP stand for?
Continuity of Operations Plan.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And again, I would like to congratulate all of you who won. And I would like to bring up some issues I had brought to the attention to the borough manager, that several buildings in the borough that were renovated into apartments. There was something from the fire marshal that contacted the borough in regard to this. And we've asked several times what the status was, and I haven't, hasn't been finalized. I haven't heard back yet. So that was just one thing. The other one is again, there are issues, you know, I'm across from the entrance to 19 West College. The tattering tat room was granted a variance on June 28th. When it obtained its variance, there were specific conditions, including that there's no additional indoor seating and no permitted outdoor seating. This has been decreasing again. And as you know, that Jim King was in violation of these ordinances for two years. I don't want it to go another two years. I have headlights coming into my house. And it's supposed to be limited to four seats. There's outdoor dining again, and it's just growing. So I just want to bring that to your attention before it keeps growing in this other country. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public comments tonight? Ms. Taylor?
Susan Taylor, 35, Look Over Lane. Unfortunately, the Yardley Historical Association is going to have to replace the stairs on the west side of the building. A cost of $6,375. The cost of progress is going up all the time. And the Historical Association would like council to consider restoring the cost of the buildings, especially as a show of support for the old library. While I'm asking things, I very much encourage all of you to come to the old library for our events and to become members. It's Yardley's jewel, awaken the library, together make a very, very special scene. And as we all know, Historical Association is not thriving necessarily in today's age, and the building needs to be preserved. So it takes us all working together to make that happen. So please consider that request. We'll be bringing in the application for building permit and the club application tomorrow. It is a process that may take a while. No changes. Are you any reading signatures?
Thank you. I imagine for something like that, once we have applications, we'll know the exact number of the fees. Do you think consent agenda is maybe a good place to put that waiver?
Yeah.
Okay, not waiver, go on agenda. And so once we know that, we can put that on this future agenda. Mr. Applebaum?
Hello, everyone. David Applebaum, 39, Grease Drive, Yardley. I'm sorry that I have to be here today, but I'm here to apologize to the borough and specifically to the River Marri community. It's been brought to my attention, and like Harry S. Truman said, the buck stops with me because I'm the president of Experience Yardley. Unfortunately, due to lack of volunteers, resources, and a transition period where the former leader of Experience Yardley left very little archival information, we had to kind of not necessarily re-invent the event, but we had to try to rebuild it from pieces of puzzle, puzzle pieces that didn't exist. So that being said, I want to apologize to Patty Sergeant, to Paula Johnson, and anyone else in the River Marri community, and the entire community as a whole, that we did not inform the people of that section of town with a letter. It was not deliberate as I tried to explain. I do apologize, and I'm sorry. It will not happen again, and I hope that you will accept my apology. With that said, thank you.
Can I ask a question? David, do you still need volunteers for Cali? Are you guys still short? I know there's only a couple nights, but are there still lights?
Yes.
The second check for parking is open every night.
Okay. Because not only could maybe we try to fill up the people's room, but also getting advertising on social media as well.
There's also, as an example, there were some people that had committed to come to light pumpkins tonight, and we had a last minute situation where we had to just call people and get them out there to light them.
Where would we, do you know Caroline Rich Wayne, your best contact?
Yeah, it's, it's on different page. Okay, both are new ones.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Great, thank you. And as with anything that we do here in the borough, we have a little misstep, I think, you know, add it to the punch list. I don't know. We maybe want to look at our event applications and just make it a little more prominent that the notice requirements built in, so we don't have to repeat. Mr. Cross?
Dawn Cross from 14 Creekview. I'm here tonight on behalf of the board of Yardley Walk and Marsh Association. I just wanted to make everybody aware, and I know you know this, but we're at year six now since construction began, actually year seven since it began. And the developers now in a hurry up and get done mode, and has expressed a desire to come in and pay later this month. Our understanding is that that's usually discouraged by the doctors because of the latest season, et cetera. And there's significant underground repairs to stone works management system that need to be done first. And we don't want to rush and do that to get their buffer reduced, and then have problems next year. So I just, I just requested from an engineering perspective, and we are homeowners, we want it done too, but we want it done right. And so we'd rather make them go through the right steps, and it means paved in the spring, it means paved in the spring. We just really want to get it done correctly.
All right, thank you. We'll make sure that stays on top of the list. Any other public comments this evening? Heard once, heard twice, hearing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Next up is consideration of tonight's consent agenda. It consists of five items, which are approval every minute from our October 19 meeting, approval of the bills list for today, November 3, for the Yardley Farmers Market, winter season, a banner permit for the more lighting and Christmas parade, and wait appointment to hard for the 10, uh, the term, excuse me, ending December 31st, 2023. Would any member of council like one of these items to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Somebody.
Motion was made by Ms. Skeel Morris, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion or comments from council? Any from the public? Dr. Fromm?
I just have two questions on the bills list. Check number 19309 for Safe Life Defense for $525.16. Is that for equipment?
Police equipment or something?
Police equipment, I believe, but I'll check on it and get back to you. Okay. And check number 19311 for $573.44 for a uniform here. Is that for auxiliary or regular officers?
Officers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call a question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I meant to say something and just wanted to say, because I see the farmer's market approval is on there, and I just wanted to acknowledge the people doing that, that for having a farmer's market happen in Buckwood Park this winter. I think it was kind of a forced situation because of not being able to reach your market in Friends, Meat House, but I actually think it was a really cool thing to have that kind of activity growing in the winter season in Buckwood Park. It also provides something that year, you know, that, that the people who have trouble getting to groceries, it's just another option and way to get food, whether it's a grocery store. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they're doing that. I think it's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now I will call a question. Always in favor of approval of our consent agenda for tonight, November 3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any posts? Any extensions? Motion carried as 5 to 0. Next up is a report from Chief Cali.
Thank you, sir. First, I have the monthly report for October 2021. The police department handled 586 calls for service, issued 98 moving traffic citations, issued two parking tickets, and five non-traffic citations for criminal matters, investigated fourteen traffic accidents, and made three arrests, number four DUI. I also wanted to recognize and thank our police officers, and all the police officers that had a very busy weekend handling outreach details at Trumpet Treat, the Holiday Parade, Carathon, and now each night on Channel 12. And I can, last item is I can answer that question on Safe Life Defense. That was replacement body armor for me. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you.
We've got a question for the chief. Any update on the last duty that was on November 3?
Yes, there was an arrest made there. Yeah, and no one was hurt.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our report from Madam Thompson. I think we have a presentation.
We do have a presentation. Wes, can you get the lights on?
All right.
You may be shaved.
Definitely inside the sheet there.
Maybe we'll have a presentation.
Who gave it a better idea than you down there?
Takes a little one off.
Will this appear on the panel?
No.
Or on the wall? Is a lens cap open?
It's not, is it?
It will quickly happen. Picture for that.
Yeah, here you go, teacher.
AV class, right here.
May have listened to say, next year, we're looking into new equipment.
Technology line, right?
We should have a staff.
We saw them walking in too.
All right, we're back.
Okay, so as you proceed, we have the Yardley Borough 2021 Fiscal and Project Review and the 2022 Budget Presentation for Tenerife. So we are presenting the 2022 Preliminary Budget for Adoption. The 2022 budget follows the same format that we used in 2021 and 2020 and 19 by individual funds, 16 in all. The budget adheres to the guidelines of the Pennsylvania Charter of Accounts for Governments published by the DCVD. Before we get into the budget, I'd like to go over some of our accomplishments in 2021, highlight a few of them. As some of you know, we replaced the annex roof. We ordered the doors for the Borough Hall, but because of COVID, everything is delayed. Police cars expected any day now. Trash receptacles, servers, computers, UPS, I mean chairlift for Borough Hall, other building maintenance here, and we repainted the streetlights. Most of these items were deferred from the 2020 budget because of COVID as well. So here is Ken and Vuzzy doing our streetlights. We received many compliments on these. We had our trash receptacle up there too. Go next. Okay. So also, this year, as you might have noticed, our mural at the train station was deteriorating horrendously. We had a resident come in. In speaking to a new resident, Linda Baldwin, she mentioned she was one of the original artists of this piece of artwork that was completed in 2008. So we asked her if she would help preserve the mural until a grant or funds can be secured to recreate this piece of artwork. Linda's in the process of preserving it as a volunteer to the borough. We're in the process of getting estimates from local artists to get cost to try to get a grant for this. But take five minutes, walk down there, and it's amazing what she has done so far. She's using paint that we purchased last year. She's sanding a little bit, repainting just a little bit, and she's doing a great job. She was a great find. We are loving her. And here's our trash receptacles before and after. We've been receiving many compliments on these as well. Our lovely Christmas wreaths. The borough's Christmas wreaths, as many were telling us, were showing their age. So Councilperson Thompson took on this project as a cost-saving measure to the borough. Via social media, word of mouth, the opportunity to assist and revitalize the wreaths was communicated. We were contacted by residents, neighbors, and low maintenance to assist. Caroline donated new donations, came up with guidelines to ensure they'd be done correctly and uniform. The results were amazing, as you will see in a few short weeks. And we also have a sample up here that we'll show when we're done. This small little project that Caroline came up with saved us over $35,000. Another cost savings was the auxiliary police force. The implementation of the Yardley Borough Auxiliary Police Force has saved the borough many dollars. The force has helped with traffic control for the parades, Memorial Day, Carry the Load, Halloween Parade, and they even assisted with flooding. If it wasn't for the auxiliary police, we would have called in additional part-time police for many of these events. So this is a great thing for us in a small town, and we're starting to see other small towns also do this program as well. So Chief, great job with that one. We have improved, once again, our tax collections and other collection efforts within our office. Just this year alone, delinquent, 2020 per capita, and occupation, and business privilege, we brought in over $9,000. Give applause here, I'm sure. We recommend no tax increase for 2022, all while maintaining the same expected services that the residents of Yardley Borough are accustomed to. The tax levy is distributed into multiple funds as noted on this slide. Because of the pandemic, there was a decrease in the value of a mill. On this slide, you will see how a mill is calculated and what it means to the borough. Here's an approximate breakdown of how much funds are distributed amongst each fund. And here's just a graph on the tax money comes in and how much goes into the dedicated funds, such as your fire, general fund, as you can see is our largest. So that is our operating account, streetlights, street improvements and ambulance recreation capital reserves. And our expenditures. Here's a high-level view of our 2020 expenditures. As with most municipalities, public safety is our biggest expenditure, followed by executive, legal, engineering, and so on. As many of you are aware, we already elevated 51 homes in Yardley Borough's blood point. We received multiple grants totaling over $2.6 million just recently to elevate 10 additional homes in Yardley Borough. One of these homes is on South Delaware. That's a demo reconstruction, which will be the first in Pennsylvania to occur. So it's a pretty cool thing for Yardley. They're going to be using us, I'm sure, in many presentations and stuff. Don't you agree, Wes?
Yes, sir.
All this is being done with no borough taxpayer money, which is very important. The rescue funds, the American Rescue Plan Act for 2021. The borough anticipates receiving over $200,000. We did receive half this year, and we anticipate receiving the other half next year. This is a non-tax source for the borough as well. While not everything we want to accomplish falls under the Rescue Plan guidelines, so we plan to use these funds towards already stormwater management, emergency management, and other expenses, and reimburse the borough to free up some of our borough funds to prioritize stuff like live stream and protectors and stuff for next year. And we continue to save for the future. Our emergency fund is currently $141,000. I suggest we establish a goal by 2025 and have approximately $200,000 saved in that fund for potential emergencies that may arise in the borough. The reason I would put a cap on this is because we do not want to reserve any unnecessary funds. We believe $200,000 would carry the borough through a major catastrophe. One example of this type of event is flooding, as we all know, which may occur. Back in September, we expended approximately $5,000 responding to a high-water incident. These costs were controlled by federally funded elevations that we talked about previously, and the use of our auxiliary police officers to assist with traffic. In order to do this, we have to put in the budget about $7,000 in the next three years, and then reevaluate if you want to increase or adjust to emergency events. And we're focusing on future projects here in Yardley Borough. The Mary Yardley Bridge is expected to be completed in 2022. Phase two of the North Main Street sidewalks, we anticipate breaking ground early in 2022. Purchasing the Pico lot, which we're in talks with now. And then we're evaluating our options on the annex, on what we want to do with that next. We continue to apply for grants for phase three of the North Main Street sidewalk. We'll get it to Dillington and then be done in sidewalks. The Mary Yardley Bridge is expected to be completed in 2022. Phase two of the North Main Street sidewalks, we anticipate breaking ground early in 2022. Purchasing the Pico lot, which we're in talks with now. And then we're evaluating our options on the annex, on what we want to do with that next. We continue to apply for grants for phase three of the North Main Street sidewalk. We'll get it to Burlington and then be done with sidewalks, hopefully. Some of which require matches from the borough, which Pat will be talking about tonight. Acquiring the Pico lot on Morgan Avenue would increase our open space, benefiting our CRS program, minimizing new construction in the floodplain, and give us additional recreation space. Looking beyond 2021 into 2022, we look for ways to expand and upgrade borough quality. And that's our presentation for today.
Thank you.
So everybody, all council sent our updated preliminary budget? And I think council can make a motion about that. Or any questions as well?
Okay. Before we get into a little discussion, I guess we'll just quick, high-level overview of the procedure around how we adopt the budget for the borough. As you can see, there's a good deal of work has gone into it. You know, this presentation is a middle view of all the line items that we spent quite a good deal of time working out, making sure that they're going to reflect our true costs for next year. If they don't reflect the true costs, there's not much point in having a budget. What happened tonight is a vote to adopt that preliminary budget. And then we also voted to advertise the budget for a period of 30 days.
Well, that has to be available for public inspection.
For public inspection.
Out of the 30 days.
All right. So that effectively puts us a month out before we adopt the final budget. So during that period of time, public can come, take a look at the budget. We would welcome feedback during that time. And certainly, if there's significant feedback, that's more helpful to us if it comes earlier in that inspection window rather than later, because if we need to make changes, we need the time to work that in, to make that as council, possibly have a new inspection period. So once we put that out, we encourage everybody to take a look at it, whether it's through a digital copy or coming in to take a look at it here in Borough Hall. All right. So we need a motion for adoption of the 2022 Preliminary Budget. Motion made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Seba Mars. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council regarding the preliminary budget? From the public? Dr. Brown?
Yes. That was a very nice presentation, but there weren't any numbers or anything in it. And I understand you just described the process. I have looked at the previous budgets, and I was just wondering, when you do this budget, if you could break down a couple things. For example, there seems to be a lot of work that is covered by engineering, legal. I was wondering if, for example, out of projects, if we could break down what the engineers paid to sort of write and solicit contracts versus actually doing other types of work. Also, what the solicitors, if we could break that down in terms of, you know, responses that had to be done in terms of, there's been a lot of potential lawsuits and a lot of work with them that way. Also, I know that certain salaries are in there, but there was a big chunk for public safety in the chart, the pie chart. And I've never been able to find the exact salaries for emergency management and public safety and coding force. I don't know if they're separate, I don't know if they're together, and how much we're paying for consultants. So just, I mean, I've seen the budgets, they're good, but I've always sort of wanted to have these types of things over there.
There's one point. If you can't get a salary, it's probably not a salary position. It's probably an hourly position.
Hourly. Hourly. So again, if we could just break into how much that's costing, so that we can have an idea of, because that's really a huge portion of where the funds are found.
Thank you. Procedureal now, just note to the record that 807, Councilman Ross, has joined us. And then a little bit of response to that question. That's something we did talk about in building this budget, is how much detail goes into individual line items. So there are some that we decided this year we're going to start breaking out. And then we added grant preparation as a line item under the engineer, so that that amount is set aside, and we can have better tracking going forward, how much we're spending in that category. For some of these other things, it is tough, because we're following the DCED charter accounts. And the way that's laid out can end up with large expenditures in a single line item. It's certainly fair, however, to ask us, what's the justification for getting to that number? Right? And although it may not be broken out in budget form, we can certainly provide an answer and an explanation of how we arrived at that figure. So, you know, if it's not there, it doesn't mean it hasn't been considered in preparation of the budget. Sort of encourage you or anyone else that has that question to just reach out, regarding that specific line item. Anything else from the public regarding the budget? Hearing none, I will call a question. All those in favor of adoption of the 2022 Preliminary Budget, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions? Question carries six to zero.
And then the next item I have is the notice to put in the paper to advertise the budget, which will go into the advance probably next Sunday. The dates for public inspection are November 15th to November 30th during normal business hours. And if anybody else wants to see it digitally, we'll go ahead and send it as well.
I'll make the motion to advertise as specified by Ms. Thompson.
Second. Motion is made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any questions on the advertisement from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, I'll call out question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Carry six to zero.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, that concludes Manager Johnson's report. Thank you. And we will go right into our engineer report.
Thank you. Just want to let everybody know we issued our engineer's report regarding the general updates. If anybody has any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those. And if there aren't any, I'd like to just move forward regarding the MTF grant applications for the Mary Yardley Bridge and Phase Three of the North Main Street Sidewalk. And in your packet, we issued out preliminary engineer's estimates for both of these projects. For the Mary Yardley Bridge, what we currently have is the Greenway Trails Grant that's already shown at $40,000. The total project cost estimate is $236,867.40. There is a 30% match, and the match would be $71,060.22. And our MTF grant request is $125,807.18. So we'd be looking for a resolution to submit for the multimode grant, I mean, for the funding of this grant. And then we're scheduled to make this submission for the grant at the end of this week.
I'll make the motion.
Wait one second. On that one, Liz didn't send updated numbers back. I don't know if she sent to you. And the borough match was $45,000. Is that not accurate?
Yeah, that was 90%.
I would think it's a 30% match.
Yeah, it's a 30% match, and we're asking 125. So depending on what we've got awarded.
Right.
Okay.
30%. Yes.
Okay, fair.
All right, so. We need a motion for the resolution, or are we doing that separately?
I just made a motion to adopt the resolution for.
Mary Yardley Bridge 21, that's right, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Moved by Mr. Ross, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. McCann. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns from council?
Do we need finalized design for this?
No, this is just to submit it with what we have currently in design. And then we would know, and I think the latest is July for this one. Correct. It's pretty much just taking ready what we have and submitting it with some cost estimates and, you know, seeing if we get the trailer.
Basically done the work on the application, right? We're still finalizing the submissions.
Yeah, the last meeting, we voted to prepare the application, and then we're submitting the application.
Can the project be already started? Like, have we already had broken ground and get reimbursed? Or do they only award to projects that haven't commenced yet? Like, I'm asking if we're.
It's going to be retro.
No, I don't think this is retro at all.
So we're saying by the provenance that we will not begin construction until at least July? And to be very transparent, probably not until fall?
Yeah, at least next summer.
Any other comments, questions? Same offer from the public? Mr. Cross?
Just a question to clarify, Tony. How much borough money was in the 2021 that we expect to spend this year? And how much did we spend? And then how much further do we think we'll spend in 2022 on this project? And is it in the budget?
And for the year that we're in, and actually the previous year, I don't know what exactly has been spent so far. We voted to spend no more than $75,000 on the bridge project.
For the total project, except over all years?
Over all years. I don't know what was spent in funding and what was spent in funding money.
So we've maintained that money in our reserve fund. So the engineering costs so far have been carried from our general fund. So we still have that $75,000 earmarked for future expenses related to the project.
So the money that we spent this year is not really coming out of that $75,000. We had it in the bridge general fund to go.
We did use some of that money for engineering, but not all of it. We do have some left to do.
Here, is that the numbers?
$25,000 left.
Just a follow-up, though, because we have prior grant money. Does that prior grant money inspire at any point?
The $40,000?
Yeah.
I could check into that, but typically, you could extend those notes as well. But we could check on the terms of that grant.
Any other questions from council or the public?
So hearing that $50,000 was spent on the engineering, what was it spent on?
There were surveys and other things. It wasn't just engineering.
Okay.
Like, a lot of the engineering work is done.
Yeah, the project. They had to go out and take core samples. They had to have environmental engineers go out there. They had to have all sorts of groups of people to check all the abutments and to make sure that they were safe and do all the work for that. So it was quite expensive.
Mr. Brown?
Can someone give the current status of that project? The last time it was being redesigned, I believe?
So the bridge material that was voted on and the bridge type that was voted on isn't feasible anymore. The bridge company that we got the quote for does not produce that style and type of bridge anymore. And the coating is not done by that company at all. So we priced out a couple other companies, and it's just not feasible to do that. So we're looking at other options. And while we were doing that, this grant became available, so we submitted it. Since we don't have anything in the '22 budget for the Mary Yardley Bridge.
So in the investigation of the other options, is that what, are those options going to be made public?
Yeah, we haven't made any decisions or anything in that. Once this grant came up, we wanted to work on submitting the grant and get it through, and then we'll investigate options past that. Since this award date wouldn't be for another seven months or so, seven, eight months.
So realistically, you need this grant money in order to go ahead with the project?
In '22, yes.
And as I understand what Councilwoman Thompson said, that we put the project back until the fall of 2022?
Correct.
Please be cautious about the borough's agreement with DC and RLE regarding that property, because I believe that runs out.
Yeah, we had been, and Liz was actually speaking with them about two weeks ago, when we were still going through permitting phases, because they still didn't finalize all the permits for us about that. So we are aware of it.
And I just feel we need to bring up the fact that the Delaware was a built over extension. It couldn't really be more bureaucratic if you tried, I think. Not if you put out a history and bridge over the Delaware Canal very quickly. So it's essentially done now. And so in comparison, late sweep compared to what this project has come up with. I also would like to, from my personal perspective, make sure that the $44,000 that was contributed by the public for this project is used only for the bridge construction for the second.
Correct. And that is, yeah, all in the state.
Certainly, in summary, I don't think anyone's missing the origin concept here, which is that the project has suffered from delays, supply issues. Everything's getting more expensive these days. Without this grant, I don't see the path. So this is our attempt to get this down. You know, we're certainly going to have a conversation about it, you know, and rank this among our priorities if we don't get the grant. You know, but everybody saw the budget presentation. You know, we don't have the resources to go ahead and just install this bridge purely from taxpayer dollars. And I don't think council is in the mind to implement a significant tax increase for the purpose of this one Catholic project. So we're applying for the grant. We're going to wait and see what happens. We're going to keep our eyes and ears open for other opportunities, you know, regarding funding this. But for now, we are in something of a holding pattern. I think this splits the difference as best we can possibly do, given the situation we're in.
But I think there's also, it has to be a commitment from this council, because the way they have been doing community raise funds off this specific project with the goal that this is going to be completed. I don't know if there's a way back out of that. I don't know how you return money back to people that donated to this fund that was set up for a specific purpose. When we voted originally to vote with this, it was, we're going to finish this project. We're asking you to help supplement this, because I think it's going to be real bad in us' community that we back out of this project. I really think we need to vote for it.
So I understand and agree that the numbers, right, we limited a $236,000 estimate. We've got 40 in grants that we just at 195. We've got 75 commitments from the borough. You know, we need to find $120,000 to make this happen. You know, and unless someone's got it laying around or has a.
We have a magic donation that is still sitting out there, waiting for progress to be done on this bridge. So, I mean, there still is out there additional funds.
But there's a deficit on project, right? That's where we are. And unless we're going to raise taxes or cut services to pay for it, the numbers are the numbers. Mr. Cross, and then Mr. Brown?
Quick question. Would it make sense to? Quick question, would it make sense to inquire over weekend what the really, what the contractors really charging to do the bridge that they're doing up by the, that they're doing today? Just to get a ballpark, to see if they're spending three hundred fifty K, then I feel more nervous about the two, the two thirty or whatever your number is. But if they do that for a hundred K, maybe the contractors they use, maybe it's not.
Certainly trying to get comparison.
That's a ballpark if we're in a good shape.
They're using their own personnel to.
But to actually construct the entire bridge.
Someone through the park services, here.
Probably a ballpark there.
The project consists of middle body, and it's a contact, contact steel bridge, which was dropped in place. They're doing a lot of sidewalk work, I thought, I thought it got down the project, but no, that, that's a good point to see how much is spent.
Particularly the, the drop in bridge, like, I can find out what we paid, I don't know what we paid for the other half of it. As embarrassing, I mean, for us.
And I think we also have to consider there's some cost to what we already added into the project in terms of moving forward, so it's pretty considerable kind of engineer, but you just mentioned that we're already putting that project.
Agreed, we are committed, that is certainly true. Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add to that, just, I couldn't hear everything, Mel, it's just that it sounds like, and I want to reiterate the importance that now with the new council coming in, many of which are the famous people, that we obviously make the statement now that council is completely committed to seeing this through and just taking longer than, than expected. And it's not, it's, I'm one of the donors, it's May of a dark, it's not just for the people who donated, but it's really for the residents of this area on either side of the bridge. The ones who are on the town side of the bridge use that as main transportation recreational active point, and the ones on the canal side use it as the speed route, so the existing bridge cannot go down or be disabled, which means that we're all on board here saying we're going to keep investing and fixing the existing broken rock bridge at, at our expense until the new bridge is in place. I just want to make it, you know, like a great note that, that has to happen. Because I don't know if we've been on that bridge, on that bridge almost every day, it's not looking too good.
So I'm really nervous moving forward with one viable option. Given our history on the project, I really don't think that's fiscally responsible. I think we need to have at least three contingency plans here, so that by the end of next year, the bridge is in place. So, can we take the next eight weeks and meet every week and come up with two other plans besides this one? I mean, if one part of the design work that's already completed, can we copy and paste to whatever bridge we lined up being able to source? I, I think just moving forward and blindly hoping that this grant goes through after the last four years have been just scrap work is not responsible.
There's only one bridge that fits current requirements, which is the bridge that council voted to move forward with, which is our free bridge.
Look, I think.
I want to go back for a second for a second with what council, councilwoman Thompson said, and I agree a hundred percent. You know, I've seen, having worked on this bridge for years now, I, I understand they're using different, their own people, but just to look at it from a macro view, a bridge went up, yardly walk, no problem. A bridge is going, just went up by the canal or by the bridge, by the, you know, shuttered stall, it went up. You know, it, it's, it's not enough for us to sit here and say, well, this is the only bridge that fits it. We've, we've got to figure out a way to get that bridge replaced, but we're going to end up replacing the existing one piece by piece anyway while we're waiting for the other one. And I don't think material and labor costs are going down, looks like they're going up. So, I understand the problem, I understand the predicament, I'm a part of it, but I agree, we need to do, off the energy level here to get this done.
Paul, how much of the credit line was for this?
Well, we took out two hundred fifty thousand, and that was for capital projects that we were going to use for the sidewalk, you know, on the bridge.
Right, so, and you know, as we're talking about multiple options here, you know, we've been working on this a long time, the dynamics of the project have been changing. I think it's fair to remember when we compare yardage path to, you know, maybe what happened with the yardly walk construction or what happened with the commission building that other bridge, right? A significant difference for the borough has to do with cash flows. If we had the cash sitting around the first year that we talked about this project, we would have done it then. It would have been at a fixed lower cost and we'd be through. But that's not the path we charted, right? We were trying to break this out over multiple budget years, we were trying to fundraise, we were trying to get private contributions. That put us in this sort of cycle that extended the time and eventually cost of the project. To the point of the credit line, right, that is certainly a second viable option, right? We have one that says, hey, we can, we can hope for this grant. Another one is debt route, right, financing, we can borrow to do the project. So McCann, if you have another option you think to find the funding, that can be number three. But I think with this project, there's, quite frankly, a lot of, you know, expressive frustration at how slowly it's moving. But then we aren't receiving counter proposals other than what's coming out of Public Works. So it's, I agree, right, it's, it's time to step up, find these options to getting this project completed. Or not? So I think we have a few viable ones on the table. I don't want to lose sight, but the motion that we're considering right now is approval of this resolution to, you know, apply for the grant, which is one path of getting. But broadly speaking about this project, yeah, it's, it's time, I think we, we need to make sure that council, the public, all of our stakeholders are involved, engaged, realistic about the timelines, and realistic about the proposals that come forward to get it done. So with that on us, for one more round of comments, if they pertain to the resolution regarding the grant, grant related?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor was at first, then Dr. Berman.
I'll tell you, are the movie business project went sideways at the point where it was determined that the engineer felt the abutments would not handle the weight of a steel bridge? Okay, and that's where we got off into, like, FRP bridge.
Understood, but as it pertains to the, the grant we're looking at now?
I'm talking about finding a different, a three ways relooking this. At this point in time, the engineers should have done enough investigation at that project to have a very good idea of whether those abutments couldn't be hold more than they really, than they originally estimated. If that is those abutments holding a really heavy wood bridge and hold this steel bridge, this could be a whole lot easier, okay?
We did do all that survey work and that's what started us on the path of doing our free bridge, because it cannot support the bridge.
I thought that no one wanted to do a full investigation.
We did, we had to do one because it was all required. This was like, oh, a little over a year ago, maybe a year and a half, probably right before COVID hit.
I'm just again going to redirect her. Motion is regarding Resolution 21 dash 08, which is in regards to the grant application. So if we have comments, questions on that, we can continue, but, you know, I don't want to lead us down the path of relitigating the project from day one. So Dr. Berman, relates to the grant?
Yes, I just want to say I'm all for the grant resolution and I want to give my appreciation to Councilman Ross. I feel his frustration, I think he's been on this for a long time and I really do appreciate it, but we can get with it, thank you.
Any other final comments regarding Resolution 21 dash 08? Hearing none, I will call the question, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Next item, another resolution regards to the Phase Three of North Mason Center.
So, in your packet, we did prepare a preliminary cost, project cost estimate for this. And the total project cost estimate is eight hundred and ninety-one thousand and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. A thirty percent match would be two hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The, right now, the grant request is for six hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
And just sort of, you know, this is for Phase Three of the sidewalk project. So I would move to adopt Resolution 21 dash 08.
None.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, sorry, yeah.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. McCann to adopt Resolution 21 dash 09. Any comments, questions from council? Anything from the public? All right, this one's going to be easier, I'm assuming. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we can now transition into the project updates portion of the meeting, do we have any tonight?
What we did was in our packet, we did include updates regarding the projects, but there was really nothing new to report. We are working with Paula regarding the Pico property and ongoing activities for purchasing that lot. And we are coordinating with Enda to work on getting the executed application as well for the north, for Phase Two. So that's still ongoing as well.
All right, thank you. Any final questions from council? Are there any here? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Foster, anything that solicitors report?
No report received.
Thank you. Mayor Harding?
No report received.
Thank you, we'll just go right down the line here, Mr. Curtis, not with us, Mr. Ross?
No report.
Ms. Segal Morris? Also have no report, Ms. Thompson?
Just want to give a shout out to Parks and Recreation for the Trump Retreat and we is on that committee and they put a lot of work into that. They had a huge crowd, like, they weren't expecting, they handled it really well, with assisted by police, the facilities, Mayor Harding, it was a great day. Nice to have some normal things back in the borough, okay?
Thank you. Mr. McCann?
No report, but I'll just mention anyone on the Mary Yard Bridge Committee, and ask a couple of words, I mean, it seems like a good place to really start figuring some things out with the bridge and that.
Thank you. Mr. Feiner, any report?
Yes, I do just have a, a motion I'd like to make on behalf of the meeting outreach, which is that I would like to recommend appointment of Eli Dryt to Harv. He is the candidate who stepped up and has had, has been at the borough since nineteen seventy-nine, has had extensive experience renovating this property. And just happy that he applied, very happy to recommend him after having a community and right qualifications, I think he'll be great for that position.
Thank you for the overview, we did approve it during the consent agenda, so we won't need the motion.
Oh, that was part of it, okay.
But I do thank you for, I do thank you for highlighting the qualifications, because we were all excited to see someone apply for Harv. It's hard to get people on that committee and now we have a member who I think will be good in here.
It's really great when people who have had the experience to really go to the borough, step up to these positions in the future. I just hope we continue to get people involved, to thoroughly bring their knowledge with them, because we have so many people like that in our community.
Thank you. That concludes our council member reports, we have no items listed under discussion items, but we do have some other business. So I will hand this over to Ms. Segal Morris.
I would like to do a motion to amend the updated continuity of operations plan, ORCOO, as I have learned that's what that stands for. Wes and I went through this plan and updated it on the chain of command and a few other items that were necessary due to unforeseen events like the pandemic. And if you have any specific questions, Mr. Foraker, I'd be happy to answer that.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the amended, Ms. Segal Morris, to read a second. Second? Seconded by Mr. Ross. Any deliberation from council? Anything from the public?
Now, I would like to know what the chain of command is.
Mr. Foraker?
Good evening, sir.
All of this be yours.
Chain of command is probably not the proper term, it's, well, actually it is. It's lines of succession, people are looking at, and to use the example, in August, with the incident that happened at New York Falls, we had to put that into effect while the chief is recovering. Something else would happen to another branch of administration, we have things in place now. Council, the administrative offices, the police department, we know, we don't have to scratch our heads and try to figure out everything is still under investigation.
Thank you. So COO stands for continuity of operations plan. It is, you know, certainly not something that we want to be pulling out of the drawer to be using and referencing. But we do have it in place because in, you know, the event where we have a severe situation, there can't be ambiguity regarding who's in charge and who's making the decisions. So that's what this is here to address. In all likelihood, you know, we're not going to need to dust it off, but we did go through updating it just to reflect what are mostly administrative changes at the borough. The old one acknowledged an assistant borough manager, that's not a position we have anymore, we have a manager and finance assistant. So it was changes of that nature, it wasn't a substantial amendment to the existing document.
But to answer Don's question more fully, there's four categories. Borough council, president, vice president, police department chief, sergeant corporal, senior PFC, administration, which is our, our professional staff, borough manager, financial secretary, and then emergency management would be EMA coordinator, executive D coordinator, and then police chief.
Any other comments, questions from the public or council? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries six to zero. Next item, designation of agent. Who's got this item?
Want me to help?
Sure.
This is, we're applying for reimbursement from AIDA, right, Russ? So it's just designation of agent that we have to do with every time we apply for something like this from EMA. So it's basically just saying, all good, who the time, that's it.
So this is, I lost the copy of it, but this is a pretty boilerplate.
It is, yep.
Item that we basically are submitting to apply for reimbursement. So is there a motion to approve? All right, made by Mr. Ross, like we did by Ms. Thompson. Any comments from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, council will now adjourn into the executive session, there will be no vote following the executive session. May Chief Gary.
Just want to make sure it goes official word.
Thank you. Thank you, TJ. Great.